Good afternoon. If you'd all be kind enough to take your seats. We still have certain voters who are waiting to check in. But I am mindful that we have important work to do today, which we intend to do expeditiously. And that tends to require starting. You can see how experienced I am. I know if we're going to finish, first we have to start. So we have a quorum. And I call to order the 2021 Hingham Annual Town Meeting. The first order of business is to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Keith German, our Director of Veteran Services. Mr. German, the American flag is to my right, to your left. If you'd all please rise.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I do not know if Reverend Ken Reed Brown has been able to make it into the room yet. I see him moving expeditiously toward a microphone. Minister of the First Parish Church, the Old Ship Church.
Thank you. A town meeting unlike any of that are forebears in that first, those first meetings hundreds of years ago could have imagined. But we're here in the same spirit. May we pause for a moment of reflection and prayer in whatever way you understand in our town of many faiths. Understand prayer, our heartfelt hopes, spirit of life of many names and beyond name. We are here gathered of many faiths and backgrounds, varied ages, doing many different kinds of work in the world and in our homes, yet gathered united as citizens of Hingham for the shared purpose of town meeting, following the centuries-long tradition of Hingham and our nation's democracy. In this spirit, may we do the work of town meeting respectful of our differences and with gratitude for all that we do share in our beautiful town, in this beautiful land, and on this precious earth we share. May we speak our opinions honestly and straightforwardly, at the same time listening to one another with open minds and mutual respect, assuming the highest and best motives one and all. And may the decisions we make both honor our forebears and do justice to future generations who will inherit their town and this dear earth from us. In this spirit, may we continue the work that is before us with love and care for all. So may it be. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Beautifully said. Now, I have been informed by our town clerk that the meeting appears to be properly and duly called. I do want to note that our town clerk, to my right, to your left, Eileen McCracken, will be ending her period of service as our town clerk at such time as her successor is appointed, or elected, rather, and duly qualified. And I'd invite you to show your appreciation to Eileen. There is available, of course, a booklet that contains the warrant for this meeting. It includes the reports and recommendations of the advisory committee. It also includes the reports of the Board of Selectmen, the Capital Outlay Committee, the Personnel Board, the Planning Board, and the School Committee. There is also a one-page supplemental report of the advisory committee, which will aid you in participating in the business before us today. I have appointed various citizens of the town as tellers for any standing votes and any ballot votes. As is our tradition, I have also admitted to the meeting a number of guests. Guests are, we're pleased to have guests with us. They are not allowed, of course, to vote on any matter that comes before the meeting. The guest section is in that far end zone by the two red flags. The forward section this time is the handicapped section. We have our state representative Joan Muschino behind me. And also prowling, prowling the field somewhere is Congressman Stephen Lynch. We are pleased to have Congressman Lynch with us today. On behalf of each of us, I thank Harbor Media for providing the coverage of today's meeting. It's being recorded for later broadcasts on Hingham Cable. I'd also invite you, please, please, to turn off your cell phones and not to use them unless there's an emergency or some other compelling reason. We are here today as a legislature. I remind you that, as I say, you don't simply go to town meeting. You, in fact, are town meeting. It's a revered tradition in this particular community to maintain our commitment to open town meeting where every citizen has voice and vote to decide matters of significant interest. The town election will be held on Saturday, May the 22nd. The details are set forth explicitly on the town website. They're also included at page 61 of the warrant booklet. And next, I call your attention to the Talent Bank Form that is in the end of the warrant booklet. It's at page 86. Members of the Select Board and the moderator always welcome volunteers for town service on the many appointed town boards and committees. Open town meeting could not continue as a tradition in this community if we did not have a strong number of capable and committed volunteers who are willing to give service to the town. The members of the Select Board and I had the opportunity last summer to interview over 70 citizens who were offering town service. Many, many other communities have a dearth of applicants, and we have an abundance of riches, so may it, may it, may it continue. The Talent Bank Form is not only physically set forth in the warrant booklet, it's also on the town's website. It's very easy to complete electronically and submit to, to the appointing authorities. We'll conduct interviews. Typically what we do, of course, town meeting is delayed again this year somewhat, but typically what we do is we begin the interview process in May, try to complete it by the middle of June in order to make appointments for July 1. We don't always meet that deadline. It's one of the reasons you have an article before you on that particular topic vis-à-vis the advisory committee. But we do, it's a wonderful part of the town that we have so many people who are stepping up to offer not only service, but to participate meaningfully and directly in town governance. We have a group of familiar faces up here. To my, to my right, to your left, is Joe Fisher, a member of the Select Board, to be newly named. And of course, Mary Power. Mary Power. Six years as selectman, years on the advisory committee, Bear Cove Park Committee, and who knows what she has as for her next act. But Mary will be finishing her period of service as a member of the Select Board, and I'd invite you, as you did for Eileen, to show your appreciation to Mary Power. Eileen McCracken, I believe you already know. Michelle Montseguer is the Assistant Town Administrator. Tom Mayo is the Town Administrator. And of course, Bill Ramsey, the third member of the Select Board. We thank each of you for the service and commitment that you have given to the town. I'd invite Mary Power now to make remarks and remembrance of certain town officials and retired town employees who have passed away since we were last together at the annual town meeting in 2020. Mary Power.
Thank you. Today, we begin by acknowledging and remembering retired employees of the town who have passed away since our last annual town meeting. Robert F. Myers Jr., Scott E. Burke, Jacqueline Fiorentino, Avis Studley, Lillian Hershey, Leonard A. Cinco Grano, James Quine Jr., Louis Ernst, George J. Devlin Jr., Richard Franklin, Mary B. Souchacki, and Arnold C. Lee Sr. We thank them for their service to the town.
Next, I call your attention to the moderator's message. It's set forth at pages two and three of the warrant. I'll take just a moment to review some of the procedures that we follow here in the conduct of Hingham Town Meeting. I remind you, of course, that what is an article? An article in the warrant is simply the statement of a question. Each article is, is set forth as a question for you as town meeting to answer. A motion is the proposed answer to the question, and it must be within the scope of the question, within the scope of the article. All motions have to be seconded. Now, the advisory committee. The advisory committee is a 15-member committee that's seated behind me. They work effectively as the advance guard to prepare for the meeting and to vet various matters that are likely to come before the meeting, where they are recommending an affirmative motion to do something, to take affirmative action under an article. Advisory's committee will be recognized and received as the main motion under the article. You, as a voter, may propose to amend that motion, either to change it in part or to substitute an entirely new motion, sometimes called cleverly a substitute motion. In any case, the proposed amendment will be taken up and voted on first, and then the main motion, as it may have been amended, would be acted upon. Now, if the advisory committee is recommending that no action be taken under an article and a voter shall offer an affirmative motion, then the voter's affirmative motion will be received as the main motion under the article. That motion is likewise subject to amendment. I remind you that all motions and proposed amendments involving the expenditure of money must be in writing. So if it involves money, it's got to be in writing. In addition, other motions and proposed amendments should be in writing if they're complicated and would, you all would benefit from having them written down. We have Congressman Lynch, welcome. Good to see you. Thank you. Thank you for being here, sir. We have Town Council. John Coughlin is right here, Town Council. And then Susan Murphy is standing to my right, to your left, on real estate matters. So if there is something that requires writing and you would benefit from some legal advice on how to frame your amendment to your question, we are, we are ready to serve. Limits on speaking. I'll get to that in a moment in terms of time allowance. Again, I said we have registered voters on, on the floor here, and then in the far corner, guests who are welcome to participate and to listen in, but not to vote on any matter before the meeting. If there is a guest who wishes to address the meeting, that is possible, but it requires the permission of the meeting. I remind you about one particular motion, and that is the motion for the previous question. That is set forth at the bottom of page two. It's by its name, not something that one would readily intuit. The purpose of the motion for the previous question is to end discussion and to have an immediate vote on the pending question. The motion for the previous question is not debatable, and it requires for adoption a majority vote. Now, I will decline to accept the motion for the previous question if I think that there are other voters who are seeking recognition, and you all have not had an opportunity to hear debate. That will allow you to make a sensible decision. The moderator will accept the motion for the previous question if it appears that both sides have been heard on a given topic and the discussion is becoming repetitious. All votes are taken in the first instance by voice vote. As you can imagine, it's somewhat challenging to operate in our traditional way when we're outdoors, but we endeavor to do so. If I am in doubt as to the results of a voice vote, or if seven voters rise and express doubt as to the result declared by the moderator, then we will have a standing vote. The standing vote, if we need one, will be conducted from this side of the field to the far side of the field, and we'll, we'll deal with that when and if it occurs. Then, if we need a counted vote in the form of a ballot vote, then we'll announce the procedure at that time. I do not anticipate that we will need a ballot vote, and of course, as you know, ballot votes take considerable time, and consequently, our practice has been not to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. Another important town meeting parliamentary issue is the, a motion for reconsideration. And you can see in the fourth bullet down on page three, no vote may be reconsidered except after a two-thirds vote on a motion to reconsider such vote. A vote may not be reconsidered a second time or after a motion to reconsider it has failed to pass. Bear with me for a moment. In terms of speaking limits, please note, we have time limits for a person speaking on any subject. Six minutes the first time you speak, and if you were to be recognized to speak a second time, there would be a three-minute limit the second time. I will announce to you when you have one minute remaining, and you should conclude your remarks promptly when I tell you that your time has expired. Again, if you desire to speak, please rise and seek the attention of the moderator. When you are recognized by the moderator, come to the microphone nearest you. I feel like a flight attendant. The microphone nearest you may be behind you, so there will be no light in stairways. When you're recognized, come to that microphone, please. State your name and address clearly at the outset of your remarks when you speak, and speak clearly into the microphone. These microphones are such that you need to be close. I sometimes say, think of it as an ice cream cone. You want to get right down on the microphone. All right. We are ready to go. Article one. Article one is set forth at page 21. It asks the following question. Will the town choose all necessary town officers other than those to be elected by ballot, including one member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah-Lincoln Whiting Fund for a period of three years? The recommended motion of advisory is that Laurel Cosman, 16 Queen Anne Lane, be reelected as a member of the committee to have charge of the income of the Hannah-Lincoln Whiting Fund for a term of three years. Is there discussion? Seeing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the advisory committee, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article two. Article two is one we see each year. It asks, will the town, in accordance with applicable general laws, assume liability for all damages that may be incurred by work performed by the Department of Conservation and Recreation of the Commonwealth for the improvement, development, maintenance, and protection of tidal and non-titled rivers and streams and other shores along public beaches within town, all in accordance with applicable general laws, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute and deliver an indemnity bond to the Commonwealth assuming that liability? This is obligatory if we want the DCR to do the work that we want the DCR to do. The recommended motion is to, is consistent with the article that I have just read, to provide that indemnity bond and assume liability for the DCR work. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. We now come to Article three. Article three asks that you to receive the reports, if any, of a series of committees that are set forth at pages 21 and 22. And the recommended motion of the advisory committee is that these reports, if any, be received, and that all of those bodies and posts of government be continued, except for the Water Supply Committee. The Water Supply Committee has been in service to the town since the 1940s, and the acquisition of the water company has rendered effectively the Water Supply Committee to be a committee that no longer needs to serve in that capacity, so all of the other committees and boards will be continued, and the Water Supply Committee discharge with our profound thanks for many years of service. That is the recommended motion of the advisory committee. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article four. Article four relates to the Personnel Board, and it asks, will the town accept a report of the Personnel Board appointed under the classification and salary plan or anything related thereto? The recommended motion of the advisory committee is that indeed that Personnel Board report be accepted. It is on file with the town clerk's office already, and that the amendments to the Personnel Bylaw, which includes the classification and salary plan and any cost agreements reached by the Personnel Board in collective bargaining, which may be embodied in that report, be approved and adopted in its entirety. That the approval of that, and adoption become effective June 1, 2021, and that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $705,306 for the purpose of this vote. Is there discussion on the recommended motion of the advisory committee, which is joined by the Board of Selectmen, on Article four? Hearing none, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article four. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article five. Article five is set forth at page 23, and it asks, will the town fix the salaries of certain enumerated town officers, selectmen, assessors, town clerk, municipal light board? And the recommended motion is set forth right below the short comment, and it shows that the selectmen will continue to receive compensation of $2,000 each, except the chair shall receive $2,500, the assessors $1,800 each, except the town, strike that, the chair, $2,000. The town clerk is compensated under the town classification and salary plan, and the municipal light board gets $214 each from light plant receipts. Is there any discussion on the recommended motion of advisory under Article five? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? That too is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article six. Article six is our budget, and I call Robert Curley, who was the chair of the advisory committee, to introduce the budget. It's extraordinary hard work done by many in the town to come up with a budget that is balanced and attends to a series of municipal needs. Mr. Curley, you have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon, Robert Curley, One Grist Mill Lane. For well over a year, the pandemic has inflicted death, suffering, isolation, emotional distress, and the disruption of every aspect of normal life in our community and the world. These human costs are immeasurable. The long-term effects of the pandemic are yet to be seen. Today, I will first address our fiscal year '21 finances, then the budget recommendation for fiscal year '22, and conclude with some thoughts about the future. The pandemic has had very substantial impacts on Hingham's finances. We saw this last year when the town adopted a financial management plan. This plan succeeded in avoiding heightened financial constraints by close monthly monitoring of town finances. As expected, there were revenue losses, especially in areas such as the meals tax and the auto excise tax. Investment income was down. State aid remained strong. The town had committed to using $3.6 million of unassigned fund balance in fiscal year '21 to offset expected revenue losses and increased expenses. Our most recent figures indicate that a surplus in the area of $1 million is presently expected for fiscal year '21. Whatever the final amount, the surplus means only that we will spend less of unassigned fund balance than originally projected. Besides lost revenue, COVID caused increased expenses. With respect to those pandemic-related expenses, Hingham has benefited greatly from the CARES Act, from which it ultimately expects to recover almost $3.7 million. Turning to the budget for fiscal year '22, revenues remain tight, and demands for services and their costs continue to increase. The pandemic presented special challenges for the budget, which were most apparent in the education budget. The school administration documented significant educational deficits and emotional impacts of remote learning throughout our student population, leading the school committee to propose a recovery budget to tackle these serious issues. The advisory committee recognizes the necessity of helping our children overcome the effects of the pandemic and unanimously supports the school's recovery budget in full. The recovery budget increases educational spending by over $5 million, an 8.92% increase to a total for FY '22 of almost $61.8 million. With respect to the formulation of the fiscal year '22 budget, expected revenues could not fund the budget, which not only involved the school recovery budget, but also increased municipal services. The advisory committee has recommended the use of $4.9 million of unassigned fund balance for the fiscal year '22 budget. This amount is expected to be offset in fiscal year '22 by the receipt of $1.2 million from the American Rescue Plan and $1.4 million from the ESER program. American Rescue Plan funds are expected to provide more limited relief in fiscal year '23 and '24. However, even with this relief, the latest five-year forecast is projecting a deficit in excess of $2 million for FY '23, and this projection is based on growth assumptions, which are less than historical growth rates, especially in the education budget. Even if there is some recovery of revenues, it is unlikely to provide sufficient means to balance the fiscal year '23 budget. Projected deficits for later years are even larger. The use of unassigned fund balance has been targeted in the past for one-time expenditures, such as capital projects or debt reduction, not for balancing operational deficits. The advisory committee does not recommend the use of fund balance to close an operational deficit in a future budget. Looking to the future, budget growth in excess of revenue growth is simply not sustainable. For fiscal year '23, the town faces the prospect of an override to address what is essentially a structural deficit in the budget, or alternatively, a reduction in services. An override is, in effect, a permanent tax increase designed to reset the revenues needed to fund the service levels needed and expected by the town. There are significant capital projects on the horizon, notably the new foster school and the new public safety facility. Funding for these projects is likely to be addressed at a special town meeting in the fall of 2022. Funding would be in the form of a debt exclusion from Proposition 2.5 for the issuance of bonds. The importance of Hingham's AAA bond rating cannot be overstated.
You have one minute.
Hingham recently refinanced $22 million of short-term debt at a net interest rate of 0.159%. The ability to use short-term funding for capital construction costs will defer the property tax impact of a, of a debt exclusion until after the completion of construction. In conclusion, Hingham's finances are challenged but sound, especially considering the global pandemic we are in. But the town will have future decisions to evaluate concerning the funding for the level of services our community expects and deserves. I'd like to thank all the members of the advisory committee. of the Advisory Committee for their diligent and extensive work this year, and I'd like to offer a nod of thanks to Congressman Lynch for all of that nice federal money. Thank you.
So we now come to take action on Article six. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth in the warrant booklet, starting at page 24. The introductory portion of the motion refers to the appropriations for fiscal 2022. Fiscal 2022 will begin on July 1, 2021. So let me explain this. You'll find a beginning. At the far right side, you see the Advisory Fiscal 2022 Recommended allocations. You see those columns of numbers, what we spent in fiscal '20, what we spent in fiscal '21, and what is being recommended for fiscal '22. So what I'll do is I'll follow the procedure that we have followed for many years on Article six. I'll read the amount to be appropriated for the fiscal year that will begin July 1. If you'd like to raise a question or an objection with respect to any specific item, or if you'd like to propose a higher amount, or a lower amount, or no amount at all, then after I have read the item and the dollar amount, then you would say, "Hold." Hold, so that I'll hear you, and I will mark "hold" next to the item in my book. We'll put the held items aside until we have completed the reading of the entire list. Then we'll take up the items that have not been held, as to which no question has been raised, and we'll vote on those items together. Then we'll go back and take up any item that has been held, one by one. We'll allow discussion, questions, and debate, and any alternative motions with regard to any item that has been held. Action under Article six will not be considered final so as to require a two-thirds vote for reconsideration or any other procedure with respect to reconsideration until all action under Article six has been completed. So we will now start at page 24. I will read each line item, and if you want to hold something, call out "hold." The first item. Selectmen payroll, $639,153. Expenses, $118,590. Under Human Resources, payroll, $147,624. Expenses, $3,650. Reserve Fund, $664,578. Town Accountant payroll, $292,016. Expenses, $11,355. Audit, $71,500. Information Technology payroll, $295,439. Expenses, $276,714. Capital Outlay, $235,000. Assessors payroll, $261,635. Expenses, $14,513. Consulting, $37,190. MAP Maintenance, $500. Treasurer Collector payroll, Expenses, $49,820. Tax Titles, $10,000 even. Legal Services, $395,372. Town Meeting payroll, $2692. Expenses, $40,750. Town Clerk payroll, $195,365. Expenses, $5,616. Elections payroll, $6,950. Expenses, $16,370. Conservation Commission payroll, Expenses, $13,256. Community Planning payroll, $230,264. Expenses, $24,205. Land Use and Development payroll, $151,283. Expenses, $7,375. Bear Cove Park payroll, $19,034. Expenses, $9,390. Town Hall payroll, $257,966. Expenses, $448,412. Capital Outlay, $52,000 even. Grand Army Memorial Hall, $19,752. Police Department payroll, Expenses, $396,900. Capital Outlay, $244,750, including $40,750 from the Municipal Waterways Fund. Fire Department payroll, Expenses, $510,273. Capital Outlay, $174,000 even. Dispatch Services expenses, Building Commissioner payroll, $238,750. Expenses, $15,790. Animal Control payroll, $69,99. Expenses, $6,200. Harbor Master payroll, $208,151. Expenses, $75,138. Public Safety Utilities Emergency Water, Street Lighting, $105,000 even. The School Department payroll, Expenses, $9,886,733. Capital Outlay, $1,018,532. This total appropriation of $62,810,611 includes any and all funds to be received under the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant Program, estimated to be $1,376,192 for FY '2022, the receipt of which will offset the use of fund balance in the FY '2022 budget. Highway Recreation and Tree Park payroll, $2,441,126. Expenses, $801,923. Capital Outlay, $443,289. Snow Removal, $626,538. Road Maintenance, $385,500. Landfill Recycling payroll, including overtime of $32,673,515. Expenses, $1,034,006. Capital Outlay, $192,000 even. Sewer Commission, $382,737, including overtime of $28,358. Expenses of $300,785. Capital Outlay of $337,000. Engineering of $10,000. The NWRA charges of $2,281,48. Debt Service of $72,720. The Hall Inter-Municipal Agreement of $445,869. Of course, we note that that sum of $3,829,259 is funded from sewer revenue. Next, the Health Department payroll, Expenses of $19,862. Capital Outlay of $35,347. Elder Services payroll, $268,206. Expenses, $24,889. Veteran Services payroll, $109,522. Expenses, $8,610. Benefits, $171,796. Health Imperatives, $2,700. South Shore Women's Center, $3,700. The Library payroll, $1,559,866. Expenses of $369,798. Capital Outlay, $146,000. The Recreation Commission payroll, Expenses, $170,780. Trustees of the Bathing Beach payroll, $26,832. Expenses, $11,750. Historical Commission payroll, $75,679. Expenses, $7,363. Celebrations, $17,107. The Country Club payroll, $890,830. Expenses, $908,350. Debt Service, $92,000 even. That sum, $1,891,180, is to be funded from Country Club revenues. The Weir River Water System payroll, Expenses, $6,369,790. Debt Service, $5,788,969. That sum, $12,416,193, is to be funded from Weir River Water System revenues. Debt Service, $5,707,376. Group Insurance, $7,146,355. Other Post-Employment Benefits, Contributory Retirement, Workers' Comp, $330,000. Unemployment, $30,000. Mandatory Medicare Expense, Property and Liability Insurance, Total operating budget that is being recommended, Is there discussion on any matter? Nothing has been held. If there is no discussion, we would then come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion of advisory on Article six, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We come to Article seven. Article seven is one of the ones we see regularly. You can applaud. A year of hard work. As was once said to me, "The harder you work, the luckier you get." So, a lot of hard work. Article seven. Article seven is one we see regularly. It requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. It asks, will the town transfer a sum of money from the Stabilization Fund or from available reserves for the purpose of reducing fiscal year 2022 tax rate? The recommendation is that the transfer occur and that it be in the sum of $178,836. That would come from the Stabilization Fund for the purpose of reducing FY '22 taxes. Is there discussion? This requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That's a unanimous vote. The next question, again, one we see regularly, it has to do with the payments to the town from the Light Plant, and it asks the following question. Will the town appropriate from the receipts of the Light Plant money? Money for the maintenance and operation of the plant for 12 months, beginning July 1, 2021, or anything in relation thereto? And then you can see under the comment that it expects that the Light Plant will return to the town so-called "payments in lieu of taxation" under the acronym "PILAT", of approximately $500,000, and the plant's PILOT payments to the town has the effect of reducing the town's tax rate. So you will see the recommended motion at the top of the right-hand column of page 31. I will not read it in its entirety. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article eight for the payments due to Light Plant less the PILOT payment back from the Light Plant to the town? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article nine. And Article nine is one we see regularly. It asks the following question. Will the town limit the total amount that may be spent from the Building Department's Revolving Fund under Article 18 of the town's general bylaws to $350,000? The comment explains this well, and you see that the recommended motion says as follows, that the town limit the amount that may be spent from the Building Department's Revolving Fund for FY '2022 to $350,000. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article nine. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's unanimous. Article 10, similar. This is on the Elder Services Revolving Fund, established under Article 16 of the town's general bylaws. It asks a similar question, that the spending be limited to $80,000 from that particular fund, and is there discussion on that recommended motion under this Article 10? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 10. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It too is a unanimous vote. Article 11. The recommended motion to the question posed in Article 11 was set forth in that one-page supplemental report of the Advisory Committee that you all had the opportunity to get on the way in. I will read it in due course. Article 11 asks the following question. Will the town raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to the town's Reserve Fund for use during this fiscal year, fiscal year 2021? You see in the comment, this article is included annually in case the existing Reserve Fund is not adequate to cover unbudgeted and unanticipated expenses for the balance of the current fiscal year, the year we're in right now through June 30. The specific amount will be reported at town meeting. Now I'm going to open the envelope, and the answer is $588,884. So the recommended motion under Article 11 is that the town transfer the sum of $588,884 from available funds to the town's Reserve Fund for use during the current fiscal year, fiscal year 2021. Is there discussion on the recommended motion of advisory under Article 11? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor of that recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Article 12. Article 12 relates to the Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund that was established in 2019, when we were still indoors. Article 12. Will the town vote to appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money? A sum of money which was generated from fees paid to the town during fiscal year 2021 from any parking licenses for the purpose of accessing slips or moorings, and revenues generated by the Harbor Master's Office and/or boat excise taxes for deposit to the Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund. You get an explanation of what is being proposed there, and the recommended motion is as follows. That the town vote to transfer the following sums from fees paid to the town through June 30 as follows. 30 as follows. 50% of boat excise taxes, which is approximately $35,000. Any parking license fees for purpose of accessing rather slips or moorings, about $40,000 if and when received, and all revenues generated by the harbor master's office, including mooring and docking permit, late fees, and boating fines, about $10,000. These sums ought to be deposited into the town's Municipal Waterways Improvement and Maintenance Fund, which allows for the use of those funds in years to come for purposes that are indigenous to the waterways." Is there discussion? Recommended motion is set forth at page 32. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Thirteen. Now thirteen and fourteen, you can look at together. They both relate to the Climate Action Plan. And let me just explain, if you haven't had an opportunity to read it yet. So Article 13 was inserted into the original warrant, and it had to... I'll read the question, because I think it'll make more sense in the context of fourteen. So originally, the question that you all would have been asked to answer was, "Will the town vote to raise funds to be spent by the town for purposes of creating a climate action plan to focus on carbon emission reduction strategies toward what is called net zero by the year 2040?" That will be explained more in a moment. And the reason that the recommendation there on page 33 is "no action" on Article 13 is not a substantive statement on the wisdom or prudence of what is being proposed, but rather a recognition that the Hingham Municipal Light Plant offered to fund this initiative. So, we don't have to. You see in the comment, it says, "This article effectively would have asked the town to appropriate funds for the development of a climate action plan for Hingham." And then it continues on 32 on the right side toward the bottom. "The light plant has generously committed $80,000 to fully fund the plan." So we don't have to. So the recommended motion of advisory is that no action be taken on Article 13, which will allow us to go to Article 14. So, we do need to vote on the recommendation of no action on Article 13. All those in favor of the recommendation that no action be taken on Article 13, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Unanimous. Now we come to Article 14. Article 14 asks a similar question. "Will the town vote to establish a climate action planning committee to be charged with what?" Initially, it says 12 members. You'll see in the recommended motion, it was curtailed to 11. But let's just look for a moment at the comment together. "The article calls for the development of a climate action plan, a recommended strategy and series of actions to facilitate a town-wide net-zero sum of carbon emissions produced and removed from the atmosphere by the year 2040." Then at the bottom, it says, "The initiative was recommended as a two-step proposal under Articles 13 and 14." Originally, 13 would have been the funding, 14 would have been the committee. We still need 14 in order to form the committee. You'll see there toward the end of the second full paragraph on the right side of page 33. "During the hearing process, a consensus developed that an 11-member committee would be more efficient and equally representative than a 12. The reduction was accomplished by removing the Weir River Estuary Committee and reducing, therefore, the number from 12 to 11." The recommendation of advisory and the Select Board is unanimous in support of the recommended action under Article 14. And you can see it's set forth there at the bottom of 33, carrying over onto 34. And you can see what is being proposed here is an 11-member committee. And you can see the composition of the committee set forth for various standing committees, along with members to be designated by the Board of Selectmen and two by the moderator. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 14? Yes, sir. Identify yourself, Andrew.
Andrew Roliter, 18 Pond Street. Good afternoon. I've been a Hingham resident for almost my entire life. I am pleased to come forward today and speak to you in brevity about the importance of the 2021 Climate Action Plan warrant. Climate change is a real and present factor in all of our lives. With this Climate Action Plan, Hingham will lay the groundwork for a safer future for its community members while exceeding the goals set forth by the state of Massachusetts. Climate change can often seem like an unmanageable global issue, but the most impactful change on our lives can happen within the communities and with our own voices. Voting yes on these articles here at town meeting is the first and most important step in reducing emissions and achieving net zero as a town. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Brenda Black for the Advisory Committee.
Brenda Black, 12 Wickham Avenue, speaking for the Advisory Committee.
Give me a second to get your mic on.
Okay. All right. This article asks the town to commit to a climate action planning process that will guide the town in reducing greenhouse gas emissions that are contributing to climate change.
Brenda, your mic's not live. Can we get this mic turned on here? It is.
Need to get closer. All right. Is that better? Okay. Thank you. So, this article asks the town to commit to a climate action planning process that will guide the town in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, which are contributing to climate change. It defines the goal of the planning process as reaching carbon neutrality, which means bringing yearly carbon emissions to a zero sum of carbon emissions produced and taken out of the atmosphere, otherwise known as net zero, by 2040 or another feasible date, and authorizes the establishment of a climate action planning committee to develop our plan. As a coastal community, we're already dealing with the impacts of climate change, and we know that we're especially vulnerable to the impact of sea level rise and increasingly frequent and strong storms resulting from climate change. Our new master plan identifies the goal of protecting our environment and calls for the town to develop policies to achieve carbon-neutral status by 2050 and to reduce energy and water consumption by residents, businesses, and town government. At the state level, the Baker administration has committed to reducing statewide carbon emissions to net zero by 2050, and the Massachusetts Legislature has recently established mandates for decarbonization within our state, with a first mandated decrease to be accomplished by 2030. We are a town that values planning. A Hingham Climate Action Plan will identify specific steps that residents, businesses, and our municipal government can take in the coming years to reduce our carbon emissions, specific steps that will be uniquely appropriate and cost-effective for our town. A climate action planning process will start with determining our town's carbon baseline, and this will allow us to track our progress towards our reduction goal over the years to come. The planning process then will involve seeking input from all sectors within the community and considering the strategies currently available to begin reducing carbon emissions. A climate action plan does not mandate required actions for individuals or businesses, nor does it mandate any specific town expenditures. It does define recommended steps to reach net zero and offers information about actions that can be taken and the resources and incentives available to help with planning and with the costs of adopting lower-carbon technologies. We expect that the adoption of lower-carbon technologies will require initial investment, and also, there will be cost savings over time. It is prudent to begin reducing carbon now, as this will allow the town to achieve significant reductions more gradually and will save costs associated with making deeper cuts later. And in the short term, converting to carbon-free forms of energy will result in lower utility costs, improved air quality, cleaner water, and positive health outcomes due to improved air quality. Now, once Hingham's Climate Action Plan is written, the recommendations it contains and information about the resources available to help with adopting lower-carbon approaches will be readily available to residents and businesses to use as they make decisions about such investments as new vehicles and replacing heating systems. The recommendations will also be considered by our town government and its committees and boards, and any specific actions will develop through Hingham's usual deliberate and thoughtful processes. For example, any municipal expenditures to lower-carbon emissions will occur through our usual open budget and capital outlay processes, in which public input is invited and considered, and expenditures are ultimately brought to town meeting for a vote. And any changes to things such as conservation actions, building codes, or zoning will develop, again, through our town's usual deliberate process in which we assess potential actions and receive public input. This article also authorizes the establishment of an 11-person Hingham Climate Action Planning Committee, composed to ensure input to the planning process from multiple sectors within the town. Seven members will be representatives from the town committees and boards whose work aligns with or is likely to be impacted by the town's carbon reduction goal, and two members of the public will be appointed by the Select Board and two by the moderator. The list of committees and boards who have designated representatives, you'll see them in the recommended motion on pages 33, 34, in your warrant book. We want to thank the Climate Action Plan Task Force, who did the work to develop the scope of the planning process, the budget needed, and negotiated the funds to cover the costs. The cost of the climate action planning process is expected to be $80,000 for consultant services and will be covered by a generous donation of this sum to the town by the Hingham Municipal Light Plant.
You have one minute.
The funds will be managed by the committee, and the resulting climate action plan will be owned by the town. Your electricity rates will not be impacted, because the light plant has already set aside these monies for use towards sustainable energy projects. In developing a climate action plan, Hingham will join our neighboring towns, many of our benchmark communities, and more than half of the communities in the metropolitan Boston area, who have developed a climate action plan, are working on one, or who have already defined community-wide lower-carbon goals. It is time for Hingham to actively plan how we will reduce our carbon emissions over the years to come, in order to comply with the state mandates in ways that are feasible and cost-effective for our town, and to do our part towards reducing ongoing climate change. The Advisory Committee and the Select Board unanimously support the recommended motion in Article 14, and we urge you to support Article 14. Thank you.
Thank you. As I recognize the voter moving toward microphone five.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Dennis Friedman, 445 Cushing Street. I'm very supportive of deliberative planning processes, but I'm curious as to why there's no deadline for the presentation of the plan to town meeting. Thank you.
Black, do you want to address that question? The voter is asking why there is not effectively a deadline for getting something... I recognize the voter at microphone three.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Brad Moyer, 23 Colonial Road. I, along with Kathy Riordan and Maria Zaid, are one of the three members of the Climate Action Planning Task Force, and I would urge you to vote in support of Article 14.
Speak directly into the mic, please.
Sorry. Is this better? To answer the voter's question, we did not put in an express deadline. We are anticipating it would take approximately a year and a half. So we would look to see if this committee would be formed this summer. We would conclude our work primarily in the fall of the following year, in preparation for any impacts to be brought through the normal warrant article process and town meeting in the following spring. This timescale mirrors that which many similarly situated committees have undertaken from a timescale to bring these types of plans forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moyer. Is there further discussion on the question to form this committee? Yes, Ms. Carr. Don't hesitate to just grab that microphone and bring it where it's comfortable for you.
Hi, Jessica Carr, 2 Topala Drive. I studied environmental science at school, and I was drawn to this particular major because of its interdisciplinary nature. It's a bit like your favorite junk cupboard. There's a little bit of everything. There's science, math, public policy, communication, engineering, agriculture, food, and the list can go on and on and on. While this stood in my indecisiveness, it is emblematic of just how ubiquitous and widespread the climate crisis truly is. Climate change is not just an environmental issue. It's a public health issue, a civil rights issue, an infrastructure issue, diplomatic issue, migration, financial, and the list can go on and on there as well. Climate change will color every aspect of our lives, and without immediate action, all these issues will continue to swell into the future. The burden to address climate change will follow my generation, the next generation, and the one after that if we don't act now. Throughout COVID, we have witnessed the consequences of inadequate preparation, when we are reactive rather than proactive. We cannot improvise a response this time. Climate science is certain, but the future is not. I beseech you to vote yes on Article 14 so that Hingham can develop a climate action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. Is there any other voter who wishes to be recognized? Yes, sir.
Stephen Reese of 7 Sandborne Road. And like many of you, I do share concerns about the issue of climate change. Now, I recognize that is a serious problem, that should be resolved, and that we should...
You speak forward, please.
And we should come up with strategies to mitigate it. However, I do have some concerns that sometimes that there are those who sometimes overstate this problem using apocalyptic, often apocalyptic imagery to refer to what the future is. Now, of course, I am sure that there are several notable problems that will arise from it, but I also fear that sometimes our desire for net-zero future, among other solutions proposed, might... That the problems that might arise from it might outweigh the benefits sometimes. So, I just want further elucidation, basically, so that the committee that we plan to form with this question, that the recommendations they make, of course, will be just that, recommendations. So that they will be considered before a general town meeting for any... Before that they could ever be put into practice or law. I would just like that question to be more clearly answered by the members of the Select Men, Board of Selectmen, or anyone else involved with this. Thank you.
Thank you. So the question effectively goes to what the committee will do and whether the committee's actions will have effectively the force of law, or whether they will come before you. Is that something that you want to address, Ms. Power? Mary Power for the Select Board.
Mary Power, 1 King Philip Path. Thank you for the question. The adoption of this article will lead to the establishment of a committee that will engage in a public process where all residents are welcome to attend and provide input. Any recommendations, whether they are policy-related or particularly budgetary questions, will come before a future town meeting, such as this one, for any consideration. So this will all be done in the typical, very public process that we enjoy here in Hingham. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other debate on the question of whether to form this 11-member committee as set forth in the recommended motion of advisory? I'm recognizing a guest now. Ms. Parker is a guest of the meeting, Priya Parker, and she would like the opportunity as part of the task force and planning for this article to speak to the meeting. It requires your permission. All those in favor of allowing Ms. Parker to speak, please say aye. All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. Ms. Parker, you may address Hingham Town Meeting.
Hello, everyone. I am Priya Parker, 186A Hull Street. I've lived in Hingham my whole life, and I'm a current senior at Hingham High School. I'd like to speak to all of you today on the behalf of both myself and my peers, both at Hingham High School and Hingham Middle School. We all believe that the Climate Action Plan is a vital first step in bringing Hingham closer to the goal of net-zero emissions. Because many of my peers and I are not yet old enough to vote, we implore you to consider the power that you, as a voter, have in this moment. This is the future at stake. My future, your future, your children's future, our future. We, as a town, need to step up and recognize our role in this climate crisis. We are capable of change. We just have to be willing to do our part to make it happen. Not to mention, several surrounding towns already have a climate action plan, and we need one too. Not only to incite change in Hingham, but also to set a precedent for other surrounding areas that also do not have a climate action plan at this time. We cannot wait any longer to take action. We need a climate action plan, and we need it now. So please, vote yes, not only for yourself, but also for all of us young people that cannot. Hingham is ready for climate action, so let's make it happen. Thank you.
Is there any voter who has not yet had an opportunity to speak to the matter before the meeting? If not, we come to vote. The recommendation is to form this committee. I've already spoken to it. All those in favor of the recommended motion of advisory to form a climate action study committee? Let me get the right... Climate Action Planning Committee, consisting of 11 members. All is set forth on pages 33 and 34. All those in favor, this requires for adoption a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no. Clearly, the ayes have it. The recommended motion is adopted. Let's move to Article 15. Article 15 is the CPC article. Now, we've begun following for 15 a process similar to what we do for six. It's not as complicated this year. There are four recommended projects, but consistency being the hobgoblin and all such things. We're going to follow it for 15. We come to Article 15. It contains the recommendations of the CPC, similar to the procedure we follow for six. I'll read each of the recommended items under Article 15. They're set forth at page 36 of your warrant booklet. I'll read the amount that has been appropriated, recommended for appropriation for FY '22 or for later spending. In each instance, these are the recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee. If you want to hold something, call hold, and we'll pick up the pace here on 15. Just give me a second. Go to page 36. So you'll see on page 36 that the recommendation of your community planning committee, the Preservation Committee, rather, is to have four projects, and I'll read them. If for some reason you want to hold one, call out hold. "To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $155,100 from the Community Preservation Housing Reserve and $544,900 from the Community Preservation General Fund for a total of $700,000 to be used for the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust." The second project, "To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $60,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Harbor Development Committee and the Bathing Beach Trustees to create a new master plan for the Inner Harbor, for the area located between 0 Otis Street to 30 Summer Street." Next, "To appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $15,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Hingham Historical Commission to clean and repair the following monuments and veterans' memorials: Lieutenant Curtis Chase Memorial at Plymouth River School, 200 High Street; In Memory of All Who Served Memorial Plaque, located at 114 Hull Street; The William H. Newey Memorial, located at 114 Hull Street; The Master Sergeant Bismarck and Butch Memorial Grave Site, located on the grounds of the Public Works Facility at 25 Bear Cove Park; and four, to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $10,000 from the Community Preservation General Fund to be used by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative purposes." Nothing has been held. Is there discussion on any of the recommended projects that are embodied in the motion under Article 15? If not, we come to vote. All those in, oh, yes, sir. Sorry. I think it's, oh, yes, the voter back there. I'm sorry. These masks are doing me in.
Ellen English, 121 Downer. Just curious on the, I guess it's to the harbor plan, why it doesn't extend to include steam, Barnes Wharf and Steamboat Wharf, which would be, take us to 50 Summer Street.
Thank you. Mr. Linder for CPC, is that something you'd like to address? At microphone three.
Actually, Mr. Moderator, I think it would be better if Bill Reardon addressed this. I'm sure he's here today.
He is. Tinker's neverster chance. Right. Mr. Reardon.
Bill Reardon, 9 Steamboat Lane, speaking for the Harbor Development Committee, one of the two sponsors of this article along with the Bathing Beach Trustees. As you know, the Harbor Master Plan was last completed in 2007. It covered the entire Inner Harbor waterfront, and it is the intent of this new plan to cover that same area. I'm not sure whether the address actually captures that, but the intent is that this master plan effort will include both Barnes Wharf and Steamboat Wharf.
Is that a satisfactory answer to the question? Apparently so. So with that clarification, is there any other voter who wishes to speak to the recommended motion under the CPC article, which is Article 15? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 16. Article 16 speaks to a proposed amendment of the general bylaws of the town of Hingham. And let me just abstract it briefly in the comment on the right side. So this has to do with the, when an appointment to the advisory committee takes effect. And effectively, you recall at the outset, I was talking about the Talent Bank Forum and getting people in positions. And typically, what the Select Board and the moderator tries to do is to get people in their position on a board or a committee, including, of course, the advisory committee, as of July 1, as of the beginning of the fiscal year. That is not always possible for a host of reasons, including periodic pandemics. And what this would do is basically say that your term as a member of the advisory committee will begin on July 1 or such later date as you are actually appointed. So if you look at the comment on the right side, you'll see it says, you know, first, it would, in other words, the bylaw contemplates appointments made on or before June 30, so that this would update the bylaw. It would, and the amendment in Section 2 would establish the member's term will commence on the first date of the fiscal year in which the person is appointed. And it also has some other administrative changes to the bylaw, including on or third, when you go to page 38 on the left-hand side, the first full paragraph on the left-hand side of page 38. The amendment to Section 5 would also add gender-neutral language to the section. This amendment of the proposed, proposed amendment, rather, of the general bylaws comes to you with the unanimous approval of the Select Board and the advisory committee. Is there discussion on the recommendation that this change to the bylaws of the town of Hingham as adopted on March 13, 1939, be adopted? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of advisory. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, we do have the voter. Yep.
Sorry, I was looking at my warrant. Are we up to 20, on 21 now?
No.
Oh, all right. I thought so. It seemed a little ahead, but this is the topic of 21.
Wishful thinking, Mr. Dwyer.
Well, yeah, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
But I'll have a remark on 21 and then leave it at that. Thanks.
Great. Is there anyone that would like to speak to the matter before the meeting? That was a little joke. All right, if not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 16. All those in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed, no? The ayes clearly have it. The motion carries. Article 17. Article 17 is recommending another adjustment to the general bylaws of the town of Hingham, effectively to have the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust do its report, to furnish its report or file its report with the Select Board as opposed to the annual town meeting. You will see that on the comment, it specifically says, "No other town committee," in the second full paragraph on 39. "No other town committee is required to submit a similarly complex financial report directly to town meeting." So this would have the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust file its report with the Board of Selectmen. Is there a discussion on the recommended motion under Article 17? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye. Any opposed, no? I'm sorry.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Shannon Kachravich from 25 Rice Road. I think that this, the echo is really confusing. I think that this opportunity to create a budget for affordable housing that receives its own scrutiny by being separated out gives us an opportunity to make sure that we're reaching out to people with backgrounds different from our own. I have a personal story I'd like to share to influence not only your vote on this, but your involvement in making this initiative come forward. So I had the benefit in middle school to be a part of a magnet program that was in a low-income housing area. And it brought in my perspective and also gave me the benefit of a magnet school education, which propelled me to where I am today. I'd like for us to be grateful for the privilege that we have living in such a wonderful community such as Hingham and invite others to join us. I feel very strongly, not only about this article, but about the opportunity we have to reach out to neighbors and make new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other voter who wishes to speak to the matter before the meeting? Okay. If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 17, which is set forth at page 39, then I will read it. "That the town vote to amend the Affordable Housing Authority bylaw of the town by replacing the reference to annual town meeting with the Board of Selectmen so that the annual report of the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust would be, or they would report to the Selectmen as opposed to directly to the meeting." All those in favor of the recommended motion, which requires for adoption a simple majority, please say aye. All those opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. Article 18. Article 18 asks, "Will the town vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen to be used to pay the expenses for design, architectural, engineering, owner's project manager, and other professional services to complete the design and to issue construction bid documents and to obtain construction bids for a new public safety facility to be located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, or act on anything relating thereto." The recommended motion on this article is set forth at page 40, where it reads as follows. It follows the article verbatim and says that the town authorized the use of $1,250,000 of restricted fund balance from the proceeds of the sale of the Hershey House and $350,000 from unrestricted fund balance to pay the enumerated expenses related to the schematic design and design development documents for a new public safety facility to be located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham, Massachusetts. I'd invite Nancy McDonald from the advisory committee to speak to the recommended motion of the advisory committee under Article 18.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, everyone, for coming out today. I'm Nancy McDonald, 190 High Street, speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. The article before you asks to appropriate $1.6 million for design documents for a proposed new public safety facility on Route 3A. As you may be aware, the town has been working for several years to address space issues in key town departments and buildings, including the North Fire Station, the Police Department, the Senior Center, and Town Hall. The current facilities have served us well for the past decades, but no longer meet the requirements of modern firefighting, policing, or our growing senior population. The North Fire Station was built in 1941 at the start of World War II. The space currently occupied by the Police Department was added on to the old high school in 1967 and became the police headquarters in 1998. In 2011, the Police Department actually lost 1,500 square feet when Shrek, the regional dispatch center, was moved into Town Hall. For the past eight years, we have passed articles at various town meetings to address and study these issues, excuse me, mostly as individual projects. Last year, a new location was identified. A building committee was formed, and it was determined that this new site is feasible as a public safety facility. This resulted in last November's special town meeting where we voted to purchase the property at 335 Lincoln Street, next to Fresh Market, where Russo Marine used to be. This site allowed the town to re-envision the solution to the fire station and Town Hall space problems. Combining the current safety operations into one facility provides costs and operational efficiencies, as well as opens up much-needed space in Town Hall for expanding the Senior Center and school departments. This could double the space available to the Senior Center, allowing for more and better programming and services. And with the Police Department relocated, 48 parking spaces become available, greatly relieving the parking problem at Town Hall. Approval of this article will allow the town to move forward to the next phase of the project, building design, allowing the Public Safety Building Committee to continue its good work. It will also allow for additional public meetings and forums for citizen input and comments on the proposed design. The advisory committee recommends that the town authorize the use of $1,250,000 of restricted fund balance and up to $350,000 from unrestricted fund balance to pay for this phase. The restricted fund balance is a result of the 2011 sale of the Hershey House, the location of the Senior Center from 1976 until 1998. Proceeds from the sale were earmarked for improvements to Town Hall for the betterment of our senior population, and this project fits that criteria. The Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee both voted unanimously in favor of this article, and we hope that you will as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. Is there further discussion on the recommended motion of advisory under Article 18? Yes. Recognize the voter proceeding to microphone four.
Thank you. My name is Lori Freeman, 269 High Street. I just had a question with regard to the design of the building. I'm wondering if this is contemplated to be within the parameters of a net zero facility? I'm assuming this building will be anticipated to be around for decades, and we're hoping within the next decade, or next decade and a half, that buildings, which represent 40% of the emissions warming the planet, will be close to net zero. So I just wanted to know how that is in the design plans or how you're contemplating that.
Is there a person involved in the project who can respond to the voter's question with respect to, well, to the voter's question? Yes. Mr. Garrity? Recognize the Mr. Garrity, who's chairing the committee on the development of the Public Safety Committee, of Public Safety Facility, rather.
My name is Robert Garrity, 1 Plymouth River Road in Hingham. I am the chairman of the Building Committee. This article will request funding to begin the design process. Now, the question, so there is no design right now, but this will give us the money to begin the design. And after the stage of the design that's referred to as design development documents, we will have a much, much better, in fact, almost a precise picture of the size, scope, and content of all the different systems and features of this building. We don't have that yet because we haven't designed it yet. However, as to the, in regard to the last speaker's questions, is we will be making sure that the ultimate design of the project will meet all the environmental requirements of this particular project. It'll require, there are just a host of different requirements for all facilities now, and there's no question that we will insist that the design of this project will be as environmentally appropriate as is reasonable and as required.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity.
Thank you. I would just follow up by saying that I don't know that it's a requirement yet that it be net zero, and I'm asking that we be thinking ahead and planning our next buildings in accordance with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the voter at microphone three, please.
Nathaniel Stillman, Linden Pond Way, 205 Linden Pond Way. Unlike some of our surrounding... Unlike some of our surrounding neighboring towns, Hingham ambulances are operated by the fire department. We keep it in-house, as they say. However, at Linden Ponds, unfortunately, we do see the fire department ambulances there often, and I believe, I've been told, that a new facility would improve the speed with which we get the public safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other voter who wishes to be recognized before we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 18? Yes. Recognize the voter coming to microphone three.
Hi, thank you. My name is Lisa Sip. I'm at 67 Elm Street. I did vote for the purchase of that parcel at Lincoln Street a few months ago, and during that conversation, I recall a discussion that, okay, we'll vote for this now, because we're on this deadline, but we're not going to go any further until we're in a forum like this. I also, the reason I've gotten involved in town politics is because my kids are in the public school, specifically Foster. Foster is in severe disrepair, we all know this. Why is there no conversation about Foster today?
The question before the meeting right now, of course, relates to the public safety facility. Is there anyone who can respond to the voter's question, which I do need to observe is not specific to the matter before the meeting? Mr. Fisher?
Joe Fisher, 3 Huckleberry Hill Lane. So Foster School is, is this my call? Hello? There it goes.
There you go.
Joe Fisher, 3 Huckleberry Hill Lane. The Foster School construction project is proceeding on pace. The state funding has been approved, and the funding that is currently being proposed is for the construction documents, is not for actual construction, and it's anticipated that both Foster School and this building project would be presented at a subsequent town meeting concurrently.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the recommended motion under 18? If not, I've got one of my spotters working here. Yes.
Hello. Russ Shute, 438 Garner Street. I was wondering if we were to do Foster School first and table this, how much of the $1.6 billion would we have to spend again, or would the documents probably be good for a couple more years?
Is there someone who can respond to the question? Mr. Garrity, come forward, please.
Robert Garrity, 1 Plymouth River Road. The, right now, there isn't any design going on, on the project. The plan is that we would, if we get the approval of town meeting today, then we would go ahead and prepare the design documents for the project. The design documents are not the final design that you would actually go out and bid. That would be a subsequent phase, called the construction document and bidding phase. Today, we are not requesting money to prepare the final stage of the documents, namely construction documents. We are not proposing to any money to construct the project. We are simply requesting the right and the money to get the project to the, through the design development stage, when all the different features of the project will be understood, so that we will then present those plans and the schedule for construction to a future town meeting, and the future town meeting would decide whether to fund the construction documents, as well as the construction of the project itself. So, the, if we were to, I'm not quite sure what the speaker had in mind, but if we were to approve the funding, all we're asking for today is to approve the design development documents, okay? If the future town meeting decides not to approve the funding for the next phase, namely construction documents and possibly bidding, then the documents would just sit there for however many years, until and unless a future town meeting were to take affirmative action to give the go-ahead to build the project.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I'm not able to, as clearly as I would like, state my concerns, because I hadn't fully ramped up on this process, but what I'm hearing is that we're looking at a million five-ish to do a design of this building. I understand it's not for the construction documents, but if we get that done, and then we do a climate action plan, and we find that this thing is pretty far distant from the approach that's needed, we're going to have to backtrack on that design and put in a great deal more. And I also am concerned at the, there was not a polished answer to, not even like we're going to make it lead silver. There's lots of existing criteria for energy-efficient building. So I'm really worried that this thing isn't quite ready for primetime. I'm very supportive of building the new building. I'll give you an example of where we could have a serious problem. I have expertise in electric vehicles. The rate at which those are progressing is much more so than most people are aware, in terms of how rapidly they're going to evolve to be primarily used. If you have eight cruisers, for example, and you have a 15-minute swapover for those cruisers, they're going to have to receive fast charging. That's a very high load of electricity. If that's not planned for in this building, say it happens 10 years from now we need that, that could be a very high cost to retrofit the entire electrical system at the building, unless, but if we plan ahead for it, then we can save those funds. And there are a number of other comparable, energy-related considerations. I'm worried that that really isn't being baked into this plan, and I can't vote for it as it's currently stated, because I am not getting the warm feeling that there is a sufficient awareness of the, what is currently transpiring over the next few years. So I'm sorry I'm not able to articulate it more clearly, other than to say that the trends in energy are such that there's going to be dramatic changes over the next five to 10 years, and if those aren't understood and part of this planning process, we're going to get a building that we're going to have to go back and retrofit, or else pay very high energy bills for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Are you trying to be recognized?
Joe Fisher, 3?
You just have to talk right into it now.
Joe Fisher, 3 Huckleberry Hill Lane. So, to be clear, environmental concerns, green concerns, are specifically going to be addressed for this project. There are other projects that the town is taking on, for example, at the Country Club and elsewhere in town. Each time, the Board of Selectmen is very clear to make sure that environmental issues, green energy issues are being addressed. The Energy Action Committee will be part of this process, and the Board of Selectmen will make the commitment to make sure that net-zero concerns are addressed as we move forward. Thank you.
I recognize next the voter at microphone four.
Thank you. Judy Sneath, 89 Norris Street. I have a math question. Based on the $1,006,000 for design, what percentage is that of the total anticipated cost of this project?
I think Mr. Garrity should come forward again, to the extent that he has a sense of what the total design, or the total cost for a project that has not yet been designed is.
Thank you. Robert Garrity, 1 Plymouth River Road. The, we do not have a final, or even a semi-final, cost estimate for the project, because it hasn't been designed. Now, at the feasibility study phase, which was wrapped up last fall, the, a statement of probable cost, that's not too well-developed, but the statement of probable cost was put forth, that the architect indicated that, based on their very general assumptions, the cost of the project would probably be around $32 million, construction-wise. Besides that, we now, let's see, so now if we go ahead into the design phase, one of the very important pieces of the puzzle will be to get cost estimates for the real design that gets developed. Now, in regard to the questions asking how the $1,006,000 would be spent, I guess, is the $1,006,000 would be comprised of about $1,169,000 to the design firm, professional architectural firm, that specializes in the design of public safety buildings. And that would take, that fee would cover the design services through the design development phase of the project. And in addition, the, we have to hire an owner's project manager by law. We have selected a very good owner's project manager through a process, and we have a price quote, in fact, we have a contract all set to go, with both the designer and the owner's project manager. The owner's project manager's cost through the design development stage would be approximately So that would really cover the cost of the designer and the owner's project manager through the entire design development phase, which would take about a year from now that that would be done. So, from there, those two amounts pretty much make up the $1.6 million that we're requesting be funded to get this project moving today. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the voter down here, to my left, around the 10-yard line.
Thank you. Ed Reiberg, 3 Oak Crest Road. I'm a little confused, and maybe I'm reading these things wrong, but Mr. Garrett continues to say that this money is for strictly design development. If I read from the warrant, Article 18 correctly, it says it's used to pay the expenses for design, architectural, engineering, owner's project manager, and other professional services to complete the design, and to issue construction bid documents, and to obtain construction bids. That's the whole enchilada. If we're paying $1,006,000 just for design development, I hate to think of what the whole development, the whole design and bid documents are going to cost. Am I reading this wrong, or am I hearing something wrong?
I think if you read, Mr. Reiberg, there is a, the motion is what we actually act upon, and if, then let's just all attend to the specifics of the motion. Now, you'll recall that a motion needs to be within the scope of the article. It doesn't need to quote the article verbatim. In this instance, it says, at the bottom of 40, that the town authorized the use of $1,250,000 of restricted fund balance from the proceeds of the sale of the Hershey House, and up to $350,000 from unrestricted fund balance to do what? To pay the expenses for design, architectural, engineering, owner's project manager, and other professional services to complete the schematic design and design development documents for a new public safety facility to be located at 335 Lincoln Street, Hingham. So that is the matter before the meeting.
Thank you. That clears that up. I still have a great concern of that amount of money being spent strictly for the first phase of design. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Is there any other voter who has not yet been recognized who wishes to speak? Oh, yes, yes. Microphone five, Mr. De Silva.
Carlos De Silva, 5 Tarasi Road. Mr. Moderator, I would move, I would like to make a motion to amend the article, to include concerns from the citizens. Mrs. Freeman and Mr. Hindman are concerned about addressing climate change. Since we just voted to approve a climate change committee, I would ask you to help me frame the amendment, where we would include, and by the way, taking the Selectman Fisher, you know, comment, I take, you know, your trusty wordy, but tomorrow, if you win the lottery and you're not with us, it's not in writing. So, I would respectfully ask that we amend the article to include language addressing that this will not take place without further consideration from the Climate Change Committee, that hopefully by then, the committee already have some requirements in place whereby the Building Committee can, you know, follow as a footprint. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. De Silva, while Mr. De Silva has referred to amending an article, I just will observe that articles cannot be amended, and of course, I take what Mr. De Silva is saying, is he's desirous of proposing an amendment to the motion. And, now, this would need to be in writing, obviously. This will be a public process, and if you want to make a specific motion, I'd invite you to make it and to put it in writing, because otherwise, we're not going to know what it is you want.
I would respectfully ask, with your permission, that I work with Mrs. Freeman and Mr. Hindman to develop something quickly?
You can do it. We can have kind of joint action. If somebody wants to come forward with the assistance of either Mr. Coughlin or Ms. Murphy, and propose something, we'll take a very brief motion, a motion, a very brief moment to allow you to do that. The voter at number three, if you'd like to speak while they're doing their work, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Greg Corbett, 70 Winter Street. Actually, a point of order, or a question to Mr. Garrity, there was some discussion earlier about whether or not the plans were going to be LEED-certified or not, or whether the intent for the design documents were going to seek LEED certification. I don't think I heard him specifically answer that question, so my question is, is it the intent that the design documents will seek at least LEED certification? Thanks.
Is that a question you can answer, Mr. Garrity?
Yes, Robert Garrity, again. Yes, it is our intention that the plans will be LEED-certified, and the, there is an architect with mechanical engineers, environmental engineers, who all work for the architect. They too are going to want to have the project designed in accordance with all applicable and even desirable environmental requirements. We want that, you've heard from the Selectman, and he indicated he would strongly make sure that that was the case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garrity. Yes. Recognize the voter coming to number five. I'm sorry, I'll get you in a moment.
John Borger, 53 Lafayette Avenue.
John Borger, 53 Lafayette Avenue. I think part of our difficulty today is imprecise use of language. I think we have to recognize that it's possible to meet environmental regulations and still not have a net zero building designed for the future. And those are the concerns that I think you've heard today. One question that I have pursuant to trying to resolve this is, part of the subtext of this is that people want to be able to participate and to have approval checkpoints as this money gets spent for the design. So I guess I would ask, what are the provisions for public review of each stage of the process as this money gets spent and the design is developed? Because potentially, in that review process, it would be possible for concerned citizens to catch lapses where we're not being as proactive and moving towards a fully net zero building as we would like. And if we could resolve that, if people could be comfortable that there will be that regular staged input, that might help.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, do you want to speak to the, the process that will be followed for this particular project? Not only the general open meeting law compliance and the like, but anything specific to this project to address the concerns that the meeting is raising?
Yes, and I thank the, thank the prior speaker for the question. It's very important that people know that the Public Safety Building Committee does post its meetings, all of its meetings are open to the public, and questions do come in from members of the public and are raised by committee members themselves on the issues that are being addressed today at this meeting. Specifically, for example, whether or not solar panels should be part of the project. That is something that the architect will look at. And what may come to town meeting is a proposal and then an alternative proposal, that it will cost X dollars to do it one way and Y dollars to do it a different way. And this town meeting will have the opportunity to vote and make a decision about how they want this project to move forward and how much it should cost. But this will all be through a clean, open process available to all members of the town who can attend the Public Safety Building Facility Committee meetings and ultimately their report, which will be coming to the board of, I should say, the select board, for a public meeting, public vetting, and public review.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Voter at, microphone number two.
Hello, my name is Catherine Daly, 20 Bucket Mill Lane. I have a small space planning business in, in town, and I am deeply concerned that the town is going forward with this motion before the town building and facilities inventory has been done. I'd really like to see a holistic approach to this project, if there's a way to shift some of our uses or expand and shift. I just feel like we're not looking at what the town needs in a holistic way, and I have concerns that we're putting money towards something that's, could be avoided. Thank you.
Recognize the voter at microphone three.
Bob Haydel, 63 Guilford Road. This problem can be solved with very simple language, and it depends on the instructions to the architect who is doing the planning now. If we instruct the architect, as a town, to assure that LEED's compliance will be within his designing criteria, that terminates a lot of issues of the discussions that just preceded my comment. So more specific question to the design committee for the town, are you instructing the architect to follow the LEED's compliance design requirements? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, is that a question to which you can fashion a response?
Yes, the architect has been so instructed. And these are issues that the town will be facing, not only for the Public Safety Building Committee. Sorry. So the, the answer to the question was yes, with respect to the instruction to the architect. And these are issues that the town is facing, not just with respect to this project, it's also a foster school project, a foster school issue. We are focusing on, and I know the school committee is focusing on, the best ways to move forward with these projects to make sure that we are compliant with the appropriate guidance to achieve environmental standards.
Thank you. So I, I understand your, your explanation is that LEED's compliance design requirements are going to be, or that it is assumed in the language that is not that specific, that these documents will require LEED's compliance design? Is that correct? Thank you. Let's see. Number four, voter at number four, yes.
Hi, Shannon Katschervich at 25 Rice Road. I'd like to make two comments here. First of all, I want to clarify first that I'm in strong support of proceeding with this article. And the context I'd like to provide is about the process, the funding process. With a building of this size and to incorporate police and fire departments in the same building, and with the over $1 million spent on just the design, I think that emphasizes how much effort is being put into the planning process. This is a building that is going to house a public safety personnel. And as a leader in business who's owned significant responsibility for significantly sized budgets, I can assure you that having a planning process of this magnitude is, it's a really good investment into making sure that it will fit our needs. I think we can stress the importance of energy concerns in the building design. But I also want to raise or elevate the comment from one of our neighbors who spoke of Linden Ponds. I think we need to remind ourselves that when you call 911, it's the police and the fire departments who answer. There are life-threatening situations, and having a new building, I think would help, would help them respond faster. That's why they're pursuing it. And you just heard from our neighbors of how it's going to help the community. I think it's a prudent investment, and I think it's really worthwhile of our support. And I think the process is being carried out in an efficient manner. Thank you.
Yes, microphone number three.
Scott, Scott Stevenson, 133 Halsted. Mr. Moderator, I moved the question.
I will not accept at this time the motion for the previous question. I think I'm about to receive a, a written motion. The reason, just so you know that I did not accept the motion for the previous question, is that I'm, I am awaiting a motion to amend the matter before the meeting. So a motion has been made, and it's quite, quite brief, to insert a phrase. So look at your warrant book, let's please, at page 40. And, give me a second here. So the, the proposed amendment, which would require for adoption a majority vote of this meeting. So the way this works is, you've got a recommended motion before you. Mr. De Silva has proposed an amendment to that motion. So the first thing we need to do is to vote on Mr. De Silva's amended motion. If it passes, then we go back to consider the motion as amended. If it does not pass with a majority, then we go back to what is before you in the recommended motion of the advisory committee. So, Mr. De Silva has proposed inserting in, one, two, three, four, five, in the fifth line, which currently begins with the phrase "new public safety facility," to insert after the word "new" and before the word "public," the phrase "net zero emissions." So that, as amended, if you approved it, it would say, "to complete the schematic design and design development documents for a new net zero emissions public safety facility to be located at 335 Lincoln Street." That is what is currently being proposed. Is there, is there discussion on Mr. De Silva's proposed amendment that would insert net zero emissions between "new" and "public"? Yes. Go to a microphone, please. And identify yourself, please.
Nicole Ravelson, 244 Main Street. I'm not at all versed in environmental construction or anything, but the one concern I have is, you know, what if that adds, like, doubles the cost of the project or adds 50%? So I don't know what net zero emissions versus LEED, you know, I'm more familiar, I've seen LEED certified buildings. That would be my one concern, if we just sort of are opening a blank check here.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. McDonald for the advisory committee that is the liaison to this project.
Nancy McDonald, 190 High Street. I would just like to propose or put out a concern for this, while I totally appreciate, and I believe that all of my colleagues up here tonight for the advisory committee, the board of selectmen, and the town administrators are 100% the net zero action plan that we're putting forward. I, like the, the previous citizen before me, I'm concerned about cost, but I'm also quite concerned, this is a public safety facility that is driven by a lot of legal requirements because of such. It has a much higher threshold for the design of that building than building a town hall or my own home. So I think that our concerns for the environment, while admirable, I'm very concerned about putting language into the recommended motion that is going to put restraints on us that we may come to regret later. I would like to reiterate that this original article came before us to include both design and construction documents. And it is on the advice of the advisory committee, we have advised to just fund the design part of this project so that there is ample time, particularly for citizen input. I think today we have seen that the vast majority of our citizens support the goal of net zero and want very much for our buildings and for our town to, to put forward projects and plans that are in line with those goals. But I would be very, I myself am reticent to put that language into this sort of document that, that we don't really know what the long-term effect of that is. I encourage all of you to attend the very open and public meetings of the building committee. It is your fellow citizens that sit on that committee. It is a very astute group that has been very involved with this town and has a real love for our town and is not looking to do anything against what this town meeting would want to put forward. So I would suggest to you that, that we have a lot of time in front of us, the next year, year and a half, to go through that design phase as a community. And please be involved with those meetings so that your, your concerns can be put forward with architects and with experts who know how to build public safety buildings and can put those in an appropriate way. And, and I just am concerned that this might not be the appropriate way. Thank you.
The matter before the meeting is the proposed, the matter before the meeting is the proposed amendment that would basically say to create a new net zero emissions public safety facility. Any further debate needs to be focused on that element of what's before us. Yes, recognize the voter at microphone five.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Philip Edmondson. I live at 55 Cottage Street. And with the great sympathy of sitting in your chairs as a member of the board of selectmen and the school committee in the town, I, I rise in favor of the amendment before us. I think we've heard very clearly today from the citizens of the town that we want to have impact on climate change. And in this particular issue, I think we'll find out in the vote that we're about to take. But I think what the citizens' voices are being heard today, or at least what I'm hearing, is that we want stronger assurances that that's going to be part of the engagement. And here's a chance to demonstrate that with great clarity. So I urge all of you to embrace this amendment and vote yes. Thank you.
I have a comment? Excuse me. Number six, microphone number six.
Hi, my name is Roger Freeman, 269 High Street. I rise in support of the amendment that's been proposed. I sit as a member on the Hingham Light Board. And I want to say that Hingham has a unique position really in the country, because we own, this residents, the ratepayers, we own and control our electric company. We can decide our energy future in a way that very few other communities in the country can do. It's up to us. We have the advantage of being one of the wealthiest communities in the country. We have the great advantage of living so close to the ocean, and it's a wonderful town that we have. But we are going to actually, and our children are going to experience the impacts of climate change that are already baked into our atmosphere. We're now in a mad rush to try to slow down and mitigate these impacts. And we have to do this as a nation. And so I think it is incumbent upon communities like Hingham to take bold action to help lead the way for Massachusetts, for our country, and really the world, to show that it's possible to take bold action. And so I rise in support of this amendment. And, and I try to do this reasonably and consciously of the cost impacts. And so to one of the comments that was raised, I would say LEED has adopted a zero emission standard. And I would also say that if, if you're not comfortable with this, this amendment is drafted that I, that was proposed literally in the last minute here, it is, I think, reflecting what Phil Edmondson said, is we want to see a tangible commitment to live up to this, what I would consider obligation and opportunity for all of us. And so if we want to modify this to say, let it be a LEED zero building unless the majority of the town says no, let's put the onus on the people that want to say no. Let's take action today that we came out here to, to be, affect our community as a town meeting in a way that most people don't have that opportunity. So let's grasp that opportunity, and, and let's support this amendment. Thank you.
Yes. Gentlemen, microphone three, please.
Stephen Reese, 7 Sanborn Road.
Stephen Reese, 7 Sanborn Road. Now, I do not oppose the idea of a net-zero public safety building per se, but I don't believe it would be a good idea to hamstring the, you know, the planning by requiring it to be net zero. I believe that we should that we should tell the designers that to try and consider making it, you know, up to environmental standards to to try and meet net zero, but to not require them to make that because we do need that public safety building. And and I don't and if that, and if and I don't think it'd be a good idea to, you know, subordinate the need for a net zero, to subordinate that to to, I'm sorry.
It's okay, you've made your, I think you've made your point.
All right. All I'm gonna say is that I don't think we should that we should, like, require them to to make a net zero. We can recommend that they try to make a net zero, but but not for this amendment. I believe I made my point, though.
You did. Thank you, sir. Any other voters who wish to be heard on the matter before the meeting, which is the proposed amendment that Mr. De Silva has made? Recognize five.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, I I'm very confused now.
Can you please identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, Maureen Devine, 46 Pioneer Road. I'm very confused about what I'm hearing in most recent remarks. This is, the first people who spoke about this at microphones talked about how much money this was. And gee, and for all that, we only get a design, okay? Then someone came up and said, well, we should make this a net-zero design. And that was consistent with what was voted on earlier at this meeting, a big commitment, a real commitment. So I honestly do not see how it makes any sense to go ahead with this, spend the million and a half or whatever it is, dollars, for the design part of this and not make it net zero at that point in the design, but instead to come up with something that isn't net zero. And then if people decide, well, gee, we really want that, well, then we send them back again and spend more money and more time, and that building doesn't get built any sooner as a result of that. So, it seems to me that to be entirely consistent with everything that's happened here today, that that motion should be allowed, the motion that is currently before you.
Thank you. Yes, voter at three.
Sky Wiseman, eighteen Trippham Road. Carbon emissions account for forty percent of our global warming issues, forty percent from buildings. Forty percent, so it's not from cars. Forty percent of building, forty percent of all carbon emissions are coming from buildings. So as a town, when we go to approach building, new buildings, net zero is a thing that is achievable. We have to put it into our, I personally feel that we need to put it into our language for any of the legislation that comes out of our town meeting and as our goals of town meeting because it's just pointless, like the previous voter said, to create a design that then has to be retrofitted to actually meet increasing standards for the way that building should be built today. Forty percent, we need to stop that. We shouldn't contribute to that as a town.
Thank you. Yes.
My name is Paul Healy, 209 Main Street, Donna Hingham. I'm on the Public Safety Building Committee and have the distinct privilege to serve with Mr. Garrity and Mr. Smallwood, Mr. Lauder, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Touche. We've had a number of meetings, all of which are open to the public. And we've taken a journey that's brought us to this point. And it's been a great deal of work to do that. And we're working with a top-notch architectural firm, KBA, Castle Booze. They build police and fire and safety facilities all over the state. And this is a very complex undertaking that's being taken very deliberately and carefully, asking all the questions that are being raised here today. Electric charging stations, LEED, all kinds of energy-saving devices, techniques, technologies, and I can tell the citizens of this town in the requests that we're making today, we are going to pursue that. But if you put a condition on this project that essentially renders it unaffordable, you're setting back a mission that is years underway already. And to delay it any further is just going to ultimately drive up the costs that we will have to pay to build it. So I ask you sincerely to to think this out. We are going to get the numbers for you as part of this process so that you will know what a net-zero facility costs versus what a facility that doesn't have all this technology but is yet still efficient will cost. And you can make the decision. But if you impose upon us the requirement that we design something that we can't afford to build or don't want to pay to build, ultimately, we're going to pay a lot more money. And this is a project that many volunteers have spent years trying to get to this point. So I just ask that you think about that very seriously before you take this vote.
Thank you. Yes, at five.
Thank you, moderator. My name is Dan Power, One King Philip Path. I want to agree with Paul Healy that a hastily formulated amendment composed on the floor of town meeting is not necessary. We've heard the assurances of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Joe Fisher. We've heard the assurances of the advisory committee, Ms. Nancy McDonald, that this is going to be an open process with plenty of opportunity for public input, as all meetings are. And I trust that. I don't think we need this amendment. I'm in support of its goals. I think we should have an energy-efficient, you know, net-zero building. But I don't want to have a constraint, as Paul Healy was saying. And I don't think it's necessary to have this amendment, so I urge you not to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have one more voter if you have something that we have not already heard. I think the issue is fairly well-joined on the motion for the amendment.
Michael.
Yes, I see you waving. I've recognized the voter at three.
Thank you, moderator. Greg Corbett, 70 Winter Street. I share the concern of Mr. Healy and the Advisory Board Committee, and I certainly support the idea and the notion of a of a net-zero building. I guess, one question, I think possibly to Mr. Garrity, who's already confirmed that the designer will be instructed to pursue LEED certification. My understanding is there are different levels of LEED certification. Someone alluded to that earlier. Silver, gold, platinum, and my understanding is the highest level of LEED certification, platinum, is effectively net zero. But with the assurances that the designer will be considering those options and presenting them presenting them back for further consideration, I would I would support that and not restrict the designer to only go with the LEED platinum or the net-net zero certification.
Thank you. And there was a voter back at four.
Sorry, I sat down because I thought you said that was the last speaker. So, my name's Nat Stillman, again, from Linden Pons Way. I thought we just formed a climate committee with the goal of net zero by 2030. I don't see why we should wait till 2030 to build this building when we have been assured by Mr. Healy, Mr. Garrity, Mr. Fisher. You know, it's quite easy to come and make a statement here but not show up month after month as we can at the public meetings. Let's get this done before 2030. Thank you.
All right, why don't we come to vote on the recommended, strike that, on the proposed amended motion? And just to remind ourselves what we're doing, we're not voting on action. We're voting on the proposed amendment that would add after the word "new" and before the "public safety facility", it would modify it so that the phrase would now read "new net-zero emissions public safety facility". So that is the motion to amend that is before the meeting. So I will take a voice vote. This requires this, in order for Mr. De Silva's amendment to be approved, it would require a majority vote of the meeting. So all those in favor of Mr. De Silva's motion to amend to insert the phrase "net zero emissions" after the word "new" and before the phrase "public safety facility", all those who wish to so amend the motion before the meeting, please say aye. All those opposed, no? The noes clearly have it. The motion to amend is lost. We now come to the recommended motion as it appears in your warrant booklet at page forty. All those in favor of the recommended motion as it exists, please say aye. All those opposed, no? The ayes clearly have it. The motion carries. We now come to nineteen. Give me a second to Mr. Coughlin, you want to take the amendment back, please? A sec. Nineteen, nineteen is set forth at page forty. And I'll read the article. It requires, strike that, I was going to say the quantum. It says, "Will the town raise and appropriate or transfer money from available funds for civil engineering services to design and develop plans and specifications for the Route 3A rotary summer street corridor roadway improvements and all incidental costs or act on anything relating thereto?" Your recommended motion under Article nineteen is at page forty-one. It reads as follows: "To recommend that the town appropriate an amount not to exceed $200,000 for those purposes, i.e. civil engineering services to finalize development of plans and specs for the Route 3A rotary summer street corridor roadway improvements and all incidental costs. Is there a discussion on the recommended motion under Article nineteen?" If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. Article twenty. Article twenty asks, "Will the town raise and appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds a sum of money to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the repair and reconstruction of the town pier wharf to address safety issues and sea level rise or act on anything relating thereto?" This leads to a recommended motion at page forty-two, which I will abstract. It says, "Recommended that the town appropriate an amount up to $5,650,000 to be expended by the Board of Selectmen for the repair and reconstruction of the town pier wharf to address safety issues and sea level rise. To meet the appropriation, borrowing is going to be permitted and that therefore requires for adoption a two-thirds majority because it involves borrowing." So, Mr. Reardon, I believe on behalf of the Harbor Committee is going to address the matter before the meeting under Article twenty.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Reardon. I live at nine Steamboat Lane, and I'm speaking as chairman of the Harbor Development Committee. It's late, it's getting cold, but this is a a big-money article, and I think we should talk about it a little bit. The advisory committee comment on Article twenty included in the warrant is very informative and well-written. But for those of you who haven't had the opportunity to read through the comment, I'd like to give a brief introduction. Let's first locate the subject of this article, especially for those who are not boaters or frequent visitors to the harbor. Town Pier Wharf, sometimes known as Iron Horse Park, although the statue is actually bronze, or Victory Park, is the town-owned wharf to the right of the boat ramp, the one with the Harbor Master shack at the end as you walk to the town landing and floats. The issue which the Harbor Development Committee has been addressing for many years now is for all the town-owned wharfs, is sea level rise, together with wave-driven storm surge, which has led to frequent overtopping of the wharf, weakening the stability of the granite walls, and frequently leaving sinkholes dangerous for walkers or bikers around the perimeter of the wharf. I've spoken to town meeting several prior times to address this issue. In 2015, town meeting authorized funding for a structural assessment of the condition of all of the wharfs, which later included borings of subsurface conditions and bathymetric analysis of the mud harbor floor at the base of the walls. At the 2017 town meeting, voters approved additional funds for engineering, design, and permit preparation. That work has continued over the last few years with our marine engineers, Spiels and Thomas, as we work through all of the details in that design. We are now before you to recommend the appropriation of up to 5.6 million to reconstruct Town Pier Wharf in traditional granite block style to a new elevation of eleven feet NAVD. NAVD means North American Vertical Datum. It translates to sixteen point three feet above mean-low water for the sailors in the crowd. This would increase, this would be an increase of three point eight feet from the current elevation of the wall. The design would also accommodate a modular ability to add an additional 1.5 feet over time as necessary. The ultimate cost to the town will be reduced by any proceeds from received from various federal and state grant programs to address coastal structural repair and resiliency. The Harbor Development Committee sees the following benefits for the town from this article. First, safety. Repair and reconstruction will restore a major town asset in a historically authentic way, making it safely usable by all citizens. Public access to the harbor's waterfront for boaters at the town landing via town pier will be preserved. It is the only public access on Hingham Harbor. The Brick Harbor Walk, which begins in the Bathing Beach Grove, will continue on the outer edge of this wharf, a long-desired goal of the Harbor Master Plan. Second, protection. Repair and reconstruction will be a major step in developing resiliency against sea level rise, providing some flood protection for Route 3A, North Street, and the Station Street parking lot, including the sewer pump station located there. Finally, reimbursable costs. This is a necessarily complicated and expensive project, but a significant portion of the price tag may be reimbursable by state and federal grants from programs such as those offered by the Mass Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Given the amount of attention being paid to the effects of climate change and projections which call for ever-higher tides over more prolonged periods, the Harbor Development Committee is well-aware that reconstruction and elevation of Town Pier and, in time, the other two town-owned wharfs at Vietnam Veterans Park and Barnes Wharf, home to the Hingham Maritime Center, will necessarily require later additional steps as part of a layered defense to mitigate those climate change effects. The work in this proposed article targets protection for the medium term. I should mention that the subject of this article is very much in keeping with the strategic direction of the Climate Action Plan, which voters addressed in Article fourteen earlier this afternoon. Likewise, the repair and resiliency of the wharfs was high on the list of priorities coming out of both the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Assessment, which was completed in 2019, and the town's recently completed draft master plan, which will be finalized next month. All the members of the town's Harbor Development Committee urge your All the members of the town's Harbor Development Committee urge your positive vote on Article twenty. Both the Board of Selectmen and the advisory committee also unanimously recommended positive action on Article twenty to reconstruct Town Pier Wharf. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the recommended motion under Article twenty? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. Article twenty-one. Article twenty-one would amend the general bylaws of the town effectively to adopt gender-neutral language. It's an extensive motion and article because the gender-neutral language needs to be filtered through many documents, but I think it's fairly summarized on page forty-three in the first paragraph of the comment. The article is a, so the question again. "The question has been put forth by a citizen's petition, proposed by citizens of the town and prepared and supported by the League of Women Voters of Hingham. The goal of the article is to change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board and to make language in the Hingham general bylaws gender-neutral, and to use gender-neutral language in all of the town's current and future communications. The proponents of the question before the meeting intend to submit an article with gender-neutral zoning bylaw changes in 2022." If you switch to page forty-four, right before it turns bold for the recommendation, you see also that the advisory committee and the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in support of this article. The recommendation kind of speaks for itself. Is there discussion on the recommendation to adopt gender-neutral language, which, among other things, would change the name of the Board of Selectmen to the Select Board and to make other appropriate changes to the Hingham bylaws, to adopt gender-neutral language, and use gender-neutral language in all town current and future communications? Yes?
Mr. Daniel Dwyer, Sixth Brewster Road. You could, I was standing here before, you could say I was a man ahead of his time. But in the spirit of this, you would need to say I was a man ahead of their time. I'm for this article generally, Mr. Moderator, so I'm going to propose a, an amendment to it, which is fairly simple because it would just excise two paragraphs of the recommendation. The paragraphs I would excise are the fourth and the tenth, which means the one beginning at, on page forty-five, left-hand column, it's the, it's the second full paragraph. So it begins to delete the words he, she, his, hers, and so forth. Further down the page, at the bottom of that same column, is the paragraph, "It is the intent of this provision," and so forth.
Mr. Dwyer, you have to help me a little bit here.
All right.
So on forty-five...
Yep.
You are proposing, if I look at the, the second full paragraph, that begins to delete the words he, she, his, hers...
Yes.
...and replace with a gender-neutral reference if necessary.
Yep.
So you're proposing that that would be stricken?
Stricken.
And then tell me again the next one that you want stricken?
The last one at the bottom of that...
It is the intent?
Yes.
That carries over to the right-hand column?
Correct, correct.
Okay, can you explain to the meeting your rationale there?
Happy to. Insofar as this recommendation is to be sensitive to issues of gender and to take away sort of the male-centric historical legacy language like "Selectmen," that's fine. And it is good that we all try to be sensitive in our use of language to people's feelings and so forth. We should continue to. But the, the problem with this article is one that you see come up a lot, and it is, it is this. It's that English has singular and plural pronouns for a reason, and that's one issue. And it has male and female pronouns, and that's another issue. And you can't solve, if people find a problem with the male-female part of it, you can't solve it by fudging singularity and plurality. All right? It just, it just doesn't work. It occurs to me that nowadays even trans people identify themselves as he and she. So to go they- them-ing everything is just, it's clumsy, it's bureaucratic, and it's really almost even behind the times if this is a changing issue. But fundamentally, you cannot solve the, the problem of gender specificity and pronouns by ignoring the fact that there is singular and plural and such things as singularity and plurality, which is what singular and plural pronouns are designed to capture. It's bad for English. The town has some responsibility as a guardian, but institutions guard language and protect its integrity. If English, as it is, was good enough for Jane Austen and Milton and Abraham Lincoln, it's good enough for us. So I would propose to amend the article as I've explained and then vote it.
Is there a second on Mr. Dwyer's proposed amendment? All right, there is a second. So as we did now, we shift ever so nimbly to the proposed amendment. So the proposed amendment would strike the second full paragraph on page forty-five, which starts to delete the words he, she, his, hers, et cetera, and would also strike the paragraph that begins on the left-hand column of the bottom of forty-five, "It is the intent of this provision," and carries over to this provision, "does not prohibit the use of a personal pronoun or title with respect to a specific individual whose gender is known." Ms. Cooper, you wish to be recognized? I recognize you.
Thank you. Daveline Cooper, 1404 Tucker's Lane, for the advisory committee. We have supported, and our comment makes clear, this gender-neutral language, and I want to speak directly then to the issue of the amendment. So this article would delete he, she, his, hers, and him whenever they apply in the bylaws, and if a gender term is necessary, that would be used with either they, their, or them. In reality, when you go through to look at gender-neutral writing, most of the time a gender is not required. So you don't actually have to use they, them, or their. And in fact, in looking at our actual bylaws, that would be very rare. For example, we would use town clerk, not, not he as it's currently in the town clerk, even though our town clerk has been a she for 24 years.
Her whole life.
So, so in reality, I think this, this is not, is not as an issue, but apart from that, if you read all of now the major style manuals, they all now accept these changes. And I, I know, as a former legal writing director, it was very awkward to start looking at language in these ways. But in fact, that's what we now do, and Jane Austen, for example, did write that way, just to make that point. If there, so there will be, if you will, those changes are not particularly, we are guardians of English. The National Council of Teachers of English have endorsed this. Why have they endorsed these changes? Because we want language to be more welcoming, to not be male-centric or gender-centric at all. We want our language to be more welcoming to a diverse and, and open community in Hingham, and this would do that. And it's a small price in that sense to pay, and as one of my colleagues on advisory said, at some point, this won't be necessary because, in fact, this is how we're teaching our children how to speak male.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper. I remind you, as you approach the microphone, that the matter before the meeting right now is Mr. Dwyer's proposed amendment. Yes?
Megan Buer, 489 Main Street. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the history. If you've ever taken French or Spanish, you learned that there was a first and second person plural, and that might have been confusing. The fact is that English also used to have a first and second person plural. If you've read sort of old-fashioned books, you have your you and you have your thou. You is actually plural, and thou is singular, which is why in the Bible, God is telling the little humans, thou. So what happened was actually the same thing that brought us Town Meeting, which was the Puritans, who decided that everyone should be equal, everyone should be treated respectfully. If you also learned the French or the Spanish, you learned that you, when you're speaking respectfully to someone, you use the plural. You know, I used to have to call my French teacher vu as, as the respectful term. So you actually is the plural. Language changes constantly, and you are actually already used to this change of sort of mixing up the plural and the singular, which is why we don't use thou. So yay, Puritans, yay, Town Meeting. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Mr. Dwyer's proposed amendment? Other than Mr. Dwyer?
No, no. Go ahead.
You wish to be...
No, thank you.
Got it.
Just proceed, I'm standing here, Mike.
Okay. We come to vote on Mr. Dwyer's proposed amendment, which would strike the language that I've already called out. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no?
No!
It's clear the noes have it, the proposed motion to amend is lost. We now come to vote on the recommendation of the advisory committee that set forth in your booklets. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no? Majority clearly is in favor, the motion is adopted. We come to Article twenty-two. Article twenty-two would do the following. It would amend the general bylaws of the town to, to do the following. Let's see if I can abstract this. Up at the top of forty-six, it would establish a standing resolution to be presented for adoption at the annual regular Town Meeting, as we're having now, and a procedure therefore by doing what? By recognizing by a roll call the names of employees, appointed volunteers, and elected officials of the town deceased since the prior year annual regular Town Meeting, and expressing the town's lasting appreciation of their efforts and contributions of the town. And if you see the language of the proposed amendment to the bylaws, that follows what I've just abstracted. It would require a vote of the meeting. You see your comment on the right side on forty-six, which says, "The proposed article seeks to amend the bylaws to require the moderator to recognize the chair of the Board of Selectmen," actually, the Select Board, "at the first annual, at the first session of the annual Town Meeting, and to vote upon a resolution to be read expressing the appreciation of the town for the service of those on the list." And you then turn the page to forty-seven, and you see that the recommendation of the advisory committee, in which they were joined by the Select Board members, is that no action be taken on this article. This is a citizen petition. Is there recommend, yes.
Get my timer going? Okay. Good afternoon, I'm Thomas Patch, Nine Ship Street. First, for transparency purposes, I disclose if you vote to adopt the warrant article, and again, if I'm correct, sorry, Mike, if I'm correct, where I'm the, one of the proponents, the recommended motion is not in play yet, correct? Because the recommended motion only comes in play if the proponent of the main motion...
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. The, the recommendation that is before the meeting right now is one of no action. So you, if you want to speak, you are speaking to, you'd have to make an amended motion. You can speak to the no action, or you can make a recommended motion that there be affirmative action.
Okay. Thank you, Michael. So basically, at this point, I would like to make a motion that there be affirmative action on this article.
Okay. So is there a second on Mr. Patch's recommendation that there be an affirmative motion? He wants action taken. And Mr. Patch, just to move this along, is, is it fair to say that the motion that you are making is that the proposed action that is queried in Article twenty-two be adopted?
Yes.
Okay. So Mr. Patch, which is affirmative action to be taken on the question posed under Article twenty-two, and I think I heard a second on his motion? Do I hear a second? All right, so it's been duly made and seconded. So what you have before you, again, is a proposed modification. So what you've got is, you've got a negative motion. If you recall, some hours ago, I talked about negative motions, and that a voter could make a positive or affirmative motion, and then that substitute motion or amended motion would become the main motion before you. So that's what you're being asked to act upon now. Mr. Patch?
Thank you.
Why don't we restart your clock?
Okay.
Since I've wasted at least three minutes of your time.
All right, good afternoon, Thomas F. Patch, Nine Ship Street. So for transparency purposes, I disclose if you vote to adopt this warrant article, it would apply to me, but hopefully not for a very long time. And the reason is, I've worked for the town. So my reference to time is a nice segue into the essence of this warrant article. Town meeting, being one part of town government, allocating time at its annual meeting to recognize and given an expression of thanks to those deceased since the last annual Town Meeting, whom given their time as employees, elected officials, and appointed volunteers. They being the other branch of town government, and without regard to length or how impactful. This warrant article seeks to take what is a nice but discretionary custom, recognition at the beginning of the annual Town Meeting, and make it a mandatory and fully inclusive for the remaining members of the identifiable group within town government, of which non-school employees are a part. I have read the AdCom comment, which, to my understanding, was prepared by the chair, Mr. Curley, who vetted this article through one-on-one conversations with me, as well as through the AdCom statutorily required hearings, and the consideration of the views of the Select Board. I got that one right. I wish to thank Mr. Curley for his efforts. Before I address the points raised by the comment, I note that my take on the AdCom hearings and Select Board's views is, the substantial issue is the time involved to accomplish this resolution at annual Town Meeting. I've investigated this, and based on my sampling, it would be at a rate of about fifteen to twenty names per minute. Ten minutes of time would equal about 150 to 200 names by way of example, and you guys can do the math. I know I am willing to permit this type of time to recognize and express thanks to those who have given many times that to the good of the town. I also suggested referral to a study committee, but the AdCom did not seem to have an appetite for that. As to the points raised in the AdCom comment, first, the issue seems to be inclusion of volunteers. This seems to be in accord with the views of the AdCom and the Select Board. I thought about offering an amendment to exclude appointed volunteers, but I decided against it because in good conscience, I just can't leave them behind. I value their time equally with the employees and elected officials. If that results in the defeat of this warrant article, so be it. The second issue is in terms of benchmark communities not having this type of bylaw. And I asked, when did Hingham become a follower rather than a leader? The third issue is the additional work burden imposed. I acknowledge that, like most warrant articles adopted today, the adoption of this article will result in an administrative burden. However, based on my discussions with Town Clerk McCracken, that burden likely would be slight, the most during the initial period and thereafter essentially cruise control. The fourth issue is unintended consequences concerned, such as last-minute identification of additional names at Town Meeting, while a theoretical possibility, if at all, the reality is likely there will be few of these, and should not be an insurmountable obstacle and not impactful to Town Meeting flow. The fifth issue is the possible expression of displeasure. That is always a risk, but we must have confidence in the good manners and grace of our fellow Hingham residents. I note that these two concerns apply with equal force to the present custom of recognizing non-school department employees. My understanding is there have been instances where names were unintentionally admitted, yet that has not ended the custom. Further to my knowledge... Further, to my knowledge, the residents have justified my faith in their manners and grace. That said, I would ask you to vote to adopt Article 22. Thank you very much.
So the matter before the meeting right now is Mr. Patch's proposed substitute amendment that would, if adopted by the meeting, would replace the no-action recommendation of the advisory committee. Is there any further comment? I see Mr. Curly, who was the chair advisory and was the liaison to this article, has approached the microphone. Mr. Curly?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Curly, 1 Griss Mill Lane. We thank Mr. Patch for his involvement as a volunteer passed in the town, and we thank him for his civic involvement in bringing this issue forward. When the advisory committee looked at this, we first felt that there really was not a need that was going to be met, that is unmet at present. There is no dearth of expression in the town of Hingham for all of the great work that is done by all of the volunteers. So many of you are seated out there and behind me. There are multiple expressions of thankfulness in the warrant itself. So the idea of being thankful to volunteers, and not just to appointed volunteers of the town, but to the people that volunteer to help out in the schools, the senior center, with all of our civic organizations. Hingham wouldn't be what it is today without all of those volunteers. We did not see, however, that use of the bylaw process to try to memorialize a standard of thankfulness made a lot of sense. Hingham has a lot of history and traditions in the way we do things. For when this town meeting started today, the moderator has in his black book a number of things that he does every year. He welcomes visitors. We have a statement by someone from the clergy. We have the Pledge of Allegiance. None of those things are the kind of things that the town of Hingham has elected to memorialize in its bylaws. There's nothing wrong with thankfulness. We didn't think that the proposed bylaw either was especially workable. It does impose additional obligations on the town clerk and on this town meeting that basically has to take a vote at the beginning of every meeting in accordance with this proposed bylaw to basically approve a resolution. And there is a significant danger that everybody is not going to be included, volunteers in this town that die, move away, they go to other places. There's no immediately accurate way of securing everyone's name, so people are invariably going to be left out. So I thank you all for being here. I thank you for listening to these few comments in my comment, but the advisory committee felt strongly that no action should be taken on this article, and so I would ask that you oppose the affirmative motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Is there a further discussion on the matter before the meeting, which is the proposed amendment to the motion under Article 22? Yes, please.
Nicole Ravelson, 244 Main Street. Just two quick thoughts on this, and I'm recommending a vote against this article. One, I'm a volunteer in the past for the town, and when I'm dead, I could care less whether you recognize me before everybody.
Thank you for your service, Ms. Curly.
And I say that in the interest, you know, and I love the democracy of town meeting, but to me, shorter is sweeter, and adding five or 10 more minutes to town meeting, please don't. So that's my thought.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion to substitute an affirmative motion for the negative motion. All those in favor of the recommendation of Mr. Patch that we adopt an affirmative motion, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no."
No.
Noes clearly have it. We now have before us the recommendation of no action. All those in favor of taking no action under the Article 22, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." The "ayes" clearly have it, the motion, strike that. Yeah, the motion of no action is adopted. All right, I'm going to try to pick up the pace a little bit. Article 23. Article 23 asks, will the town appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds an amount to be expended under the direction of the 2017 Hingham Building Committee? For a windows replacement project at Plymouth River School, the project would replace necessary doors, windows, and make other necessary repairs or replacements to meet MSBA requirements, which proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve an asset that is otherwise capable of supporting the required educational program, and for which the town has applied for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Committee. The, this will require a two-thirds majority, and your recommended motion was contained in the supplemental report of the advisory committee that was available upon your entry to the meeting today. I'll abstract it rather succinctly, that the recommendation is that the town appropriate an amount not to exceed $3,993,600 for the purpose of paying for a windows replacement project at PRS. The project would replace necessary doors and windows and make the changes that I've just spoken to under the MSBA requirements, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto. It continues, does the recommendation, the recommended motion of advisory, that the proposed repair project would materially extend the useful life of the school and preserve it as an asset capable of supporting the required educational programs, and for which the town has applied for a grant from MSBA. The, there is an acknowledgement here that the town acknowledges that the grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need. This requires for adoption because it entails borrowing a two-thirds majority of the meeting. So that is the recommendation of the advisory committee, that amount not to exceed $3,993,600 be allocated for this purpose. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended, recommended, the recommended motion of advisory. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 24. Article 24 asks, will the town authorize the school department to enter into a lease of up to five years for the purpose of leasing new school buses for regular transportation or anything related thereto? Your recommended motion of advisory is on 49, upper left, and that the town authorize the school department to enter into a lease for the purpose of leasing new school buses used for regular transportation. Is there discussion on that? If not, we come to vote on it. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no."
No.
It's a unanimous vote. 25. Will the town authorize but not require the expansion of the role of the 2017 School Building Committee to pursue, oversee, and execute the replacement of windows, doors, and related infrastructure with respect to the PRS, with respect to Plymouth River Elementary School pursuant to, and in conjunction with the Hingham invitation to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Accelerated Repair Grant Program? Obviously, this is related to the article that you've just approved, the, or the motion that you've just approved, and it says recommended that the town authorize but not require the expansion of the role of the 2017 School Building Committee to pursue the project that I've just abstracted. Is there discussion on the recommended motion under Article 25? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 26. Article 26 asks, just give me a second here to get my next page ready. Article 26 asks, will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham adopted March 10, 1941, as heretofore amended as follows? Then, of course, it goes on for many pages, which if it were somewhat earlier, I would read line by line, but I will refrain from doing that. I'll go instead to the comment on page 52, which says, this article proposes changes to the floodplain protection overlay district provisions of the zoning bylaw. Why? In order to remain in compliance with federal regulations. It continues at the bottom of the next paragraph, failure to adopt regulations meeting FEMA's minimum standards can result in a community being removed from the program and property owners losing eligibility for flood insurance. If you turn to 53, in the second full paragraph on page 53, you see that this requires for adoption or approval, two-thirds vote of town meeting. And that is because this is a zoning article, and zoning articles in general require two-thirds majority for adoption. You then see your recommended motion, boldly stated as recommended, that the town amend the zoning bylaw as follows, and then, of course, it goes on for those same many pages, the basic purpose of which is to adopt the changes necessary to keep us in the FEMA program. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion of the advisory committee under this article. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 27. Article 27 asks, will the town amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham, 1941, and this speaks to accessory dwelling units? Now, I'll just read the purpose piece, because I think this will frame it up for action. Purpose: Consistent with the master plan goals and objectives adopted March 20, 2017, the purpose of permitting accellery, accellery, accessory dwelling units in connection with single-family dwellings was acted on. And then, if you go to the comment, again, I'm just trying to shape this up for it, 59, this is a citizen's petition, right at the beginning of the comment. It says, the intent of the article is to modify the zoning bylaw entitled accessory dwelling units to allow detached, as well as attached, accessory dwelling units, ADUs. If you then go over to the right-hand column toward the bottom, just above the Arabic 1, the planning board was unanimous in the view that allowing detached ADUs has merit and should be considered, but more study, discussion, and input is required. Illustrative of the questions to be considered are those raised by board members, and then the comment goes on. So then, if you go to page 60, right-hand side, the advisory committee voted unanimously in support of a recommended motion, and so basically, what is before the meeting today is the following question. That the town establish a, or the answer of the motion is that indeed, the town establish a committee to be known as the ADU Study Committee for the purpose of reviewing the merits of this article, and/or the merits of amending the bylaw, or the zoning bylaw, to allow detached accessory dwelling units and/or to amend any other provision of the zoning bylaw reasonably related to the creation of accessory dwelling units, and it goes on. So what is before the meeting today is the question of whether you wish to establish this ADU Study Committee, which would consist of seven members, one member of the planning board, or its designee, one member of the Council on Aging, one member of the Committee on Disabilities, one member of the ZBA, one member of the Historic Districts Commission, one resident of the town apported by the select board, and one resident of the town appointed by the moderator, who shall not be members of the foregoing boards. So it would be total of seven members. So that is the question before the meeting. Is there discussion on the recommendation that the aforementioned committee be established? Where am I looking? Ah, yes. I think Cooper's a little faster on the field.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ray Estes, 92 Ford Hill Street. Good afternoon. This article was proposed to extend the existing ADU bylaw, approved in 2018, to detached structures. Currently, our zoning bylaw allows only one dwelling unit per lot. A structure is deemed a dwelling unit by having bathing facilities. Our proposal was tailored to legalize a situation involving our own property, admittedly, for use by our family only, but we believed, and still believe, that a detached ADU bylaw would benefit many in our town who have a second, second structure on their property that they would like to utilize for personal residential use. The work of the prior ADU bylaw committee a number of years ago that ultimately led to the existing law did not focus on detached structures in detail, as it was determined that allowing an ADU within the main dwelling was the appropriate incremental step. In the three years since the existing ADU bylaw was enacted, there have been 13 permits issued by the ZBA. As the draft master plan recommends, ADUs should be considered to provide additional targeted housing opportunities to residents and their families. If adopted, a detached ADU bylaw could provide greater opportunity for senior citizens to age in place, for residents to accommodate visiting family, and provide separate independent dwelling options for adult children or other family members facing physical, mental, or financial challenges. We appreciate the time and attention given by the planning board and its staff in reviewing this proposal. We recognize that there are concerns surrounding certain issues that could benefit from further study, and we endorse that recommendation. We respect the established process. We support the idea of making good law that benefits the entire community and not a single or few residents. But we do so mindful of the reality that we must balance that effort with the evolving demographics and desires of our community's residents. We cannot continue to embrace the Hingham of 200 years ago, or even 20 years ago, as if frozen in time. We must adapt to the Hingham of today in the 21st century to continue to grow as a community in a positive and welcoming way. And to that end, we must hold our elected officials accountable to ensure that the appropriate balance of tradition and sensible change is pursued in a manner commensurate with the needs and desires of the Hingham of both today and tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the matter before the meeting, the establishment of this committee? If not, we come to vote, all the, yep.
Nicole Ravelson, 244 Main Street. This is probably a stupid question, but if you vote "no" against this one, so you're voting "no" against an ADU Study Committee, does that mean you're voting "yes" for detached ADUs, or you're just voting "no" against...
No. The only matter before the meeting is the question of creating this committee or not.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." It's a unanimous vote. Article 28. Article 28 asks, will the town authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen, oh, will the town authorize but not require the select board to accept grants of easements for streets, water, I'm a slow learner, drainage, sewer, and utility purposes, or any public purpose on terms or conditions that the board deems in the best interests of the town? Not surprisingly, the recommended motion is "yes," that the town authorize but not require the select board to undertake this action on our behalf. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote on the recommended motion under Article 28. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed, "no." That's a unanimous vote. Now, we are at the conclusion of the warrant, and consequently, I will invite Mary Power as chair of the select board in one of her final official actions to move that the 2021 annual town meeting of the town of Hingham be dissolved. I... I observe that this motion does require a second, so it will require someone out there to second the motion, and regrettably, it is not debatable.[1770.71][1770.71](LAUGHING). Ms. Power?
I move to dissolve the annual town meeting of 2021.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It's a unanimous vote.[1788.11][1788.11](APPLAUSE).